Good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:02 and the date is May the 10th, 2011. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. The board consists of five members and two alternates. The alternates taking part, full part in the discussion, becoming a voting member in the absence of a member or when a member abstains for conflict of interest. Present tonight are members John Golsey, Betty Hollow, Joan Knauski, alternate Kate Townsley, and Michelle Drabell, and I'm Greg LaValle, the acting chair. Also present are zoning administrator John Paskey and secretary Paul Eschenbacher. The board operates under the following procedures. One, the chair will name and describe the case. Two, the zoning administrator or secretary will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The appellant or the representative will give reasons as to why the appeal should be viewed favorably. Four, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Five, anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Six, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. Seven, if necessary, the appellant or their representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Eight, testimony from the floor shall be closed and the board will deliberate and render a decision. According to the Athens City Code Section 2307-03B, the board has the power to grant variances from the strict application of the code, provided the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the code is observed, public safety and welfare are secured, and substantial justice is done. According to the Athens City Code Section 23.07.10, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the board finds, based on direct specific findings of fact, that each of the following conditions have been supported. One, practical difficulty and undue hardship. Because there's exceptional and extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to achieve the public purposes. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and same vicinity, while granting the requested variance would not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone and the same vicinity. Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible and reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance would not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of a specific piece of property or intended use of said property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonable practical formulation of general regulations such as conditions or situations. Any person resident, officer, or department or appointed body of the city of Athens agreed by a decision of the board may petition the Athens County Court of Common Pleas concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition must be filed within 30 days after mailing of the decision of the board to the appellant. There are four cases on tonight's agenda. Case one, 11-0V, John Soul appellate. Case two, 11-06V, Lisa Dobble appellate. Number three, case 11-07V, Tom Miller, Holzer Clinic appellate. And number four, case 11-08S, Zone B3, Kevin Gillespie, Integrated Services of Appalachian, Ohio appellate. The board is required to take testimony under oath. Would anyone wishing to speak concerning any item on the agenda, please stand? Even if you think you're going to speak possibly, please stand. You won't necessarily have to speak. Please raise your right hand and do you swear to affirm that any testimony you will present to the board will be the whole truth, the truth, and nothing but the truth? The first case is case 11-05V, Zone R1, 13 North May Avenue, John Soul appellate. The appellant is requesting a variance from Athens City Code 23.010.01 Table A, Schedule of Volts Controls, to allow construction of an attached breezeway to a house with a side setback of 0.7 inches where eight feet is the minimum requirement, and a combined side setbacks of 11.8 feet where 20 feet is the minimum requirement. Pretty self-explanatory there.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add to any questions.
No? John, you want to take the podium and state your name, full name, and address?
Yeah, my name is John Soul and I live on 13 North May Avenue in Athens. Do you want me to just?
Yeah, just go ahead and tell us why you feel that we should grant that.
Um, I've gone ahead, obviously, and filled out the application here and tried to answer all the questions to the best of my ability. I feel that, you know, requesting this is certainly a reasonable request. One of the main reasons is that the topography of my property has a very slight slope towards the back of the property, and the garage is located on the back of the property. And under conditions of rain and snow, the garage fills up with anywhere from a little bit to two or three inches of water. And trying to deal with the drainage, actually, the entire backyard and most of the surrounding areas, that's where the water accumulates. So getting cars and myself into and out of the garage has become challenging, especially, you know, as time has gone on, we seem to have more and more rain and snow. So parking the car closer to the side door there is where I typically park the car. And I just want to access the house in a manner that I can get in and out without having to deal with the garage. The garage is just kind of, you know, was built in a former time. The garage doors are not very wide. It's just not very accessible. And I've spoken to the neighbors. My neighbor next door, who is closest to this particular setback in the packet, has written a letter or note that they are in agreement with this. And I feel that the request is given the sending intent of the code. The code, I don't know if you can see that. The first thing talks about, you know, the intent and I think the right and the ability to reasonably access my car and get into and out of my house. Allowing for this carport makes it a little bit more reasonable for me to be able to do it. And if you look on the original deed to the house, back when this property was platted, as most of the East Side, the lots are very small. Most houses, and I'm also included that, and I can give you another copy of it. If you walk down my street, May Avenue, Shannon, and I can go on and on, there are at least every other house, numerous examples of properties that have a garage or an outbuilding in a side or back setback. Once again, my original deed says that the only real deed restriction on my original deed is a front setback, and that's pretty consistent with the East Side, where the houses pretty much line up about 25, 30 feet from the curb. As far as back setbacks and side setbacks, if we were to comply with that, really the lots would be pretty much obsolete. They just don't work. So, you know, I think having this carport, and there are certainly examples of carports that are inside setbacks all over the East Side I brought with me. Can I just come up for a second and give these to you?
Yes.
This is my house right here, and this is the distance between the houses.
These are in our packet, black and white.
Right, and these are just examples of just a few houses that are within hundreds of feet of my house that are similar in nature to.
Are these also in our packet, but just black and white?
Some of them are, but they're, those are just fully integrated.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Soul?
I have one question, and it has to do with drainage and the slope of the roof of the breezeway. Since we didn't see any designs, I was looking at, I mean, the neighbor at 15, even though they agree with it, if it went off from that roof, if it went toward his house, it'd be dropping right down by this, uh, her foundations. But in the packet that we received, there was a place on North Shannon that has a roof pitch identical to the house roof pitch, which was, I'm assuming that's what you're planning on doing, with the drain running into the driveway. So drainage was my real concern in terms of being so close to the adjoining lot and the structure on it.
What my intention is, is to pick up all of the surface water off of that roof and tie it into the gutter drain which goes to the street.
Oh, so it's right along the edge of your property?
It's, there's a drain on the side of my house, on this side, that I'll be able to access to get to the street.
On the inside part of the driveway?
Right, on the inside. Just a consequence of the age of the construction when it was built and, you know, accomplishing that is, will be incredibly difficult. So this, I'll be able to pick up that surface water and bring it to the street without going on the neighbor's property.
So will there be a pitch on the roof of the breezeway or will it have a flat roof?
It'll, it'll, I think it has a drawer.
Oh, okay, we didn't see that.
It's in the packet.
That was absent from the packet.
That was absent from the packet.
It was?
Yes. Yeah, could we take a look at that? That would be perfect. That's what I wanted to see.
Yeah, there's going to be a slight pitch which will allow me to put a gutter on all three sides of that roof.
And it'll drag in towards the inside?
Yes, down, and I'll be able to pick up the gutter from the front of the roof there and take it forward to the street.
Okay, that's my concern.
You mentioned that you're going to have four parking spaces and that four exist now. I assume you're just talking about stacking in the driveway.
Right, there's, obviously, I'm not making any change in parking. It's just, you know, obviously, the driveway is also narrow. It's eight feet and, you know, one of my other intentions is obviously not to park on the street, just to park in my driveway. And, you know, as far as light and air and there's really no impact, no effect on my neighbors at all, because it's, you know, it's an open structure, as indicated by that drawer, which I'm sorry you didn't get. I thought that was in the packet. Any other questions?
I have a question for Paul, maybe. Could this be considered like this carport to be an accessory building, which is less respected?
Not if it's attached to the house, no.
Oh, as if it's attached.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to. Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in general comment? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I just wanted to reference that there was a letter of support in the packet from the neighbor at 15 North May. I'll read it aloud here. Dear Variance Board, as neighbor and owner of 15 North May Avenue, I am in support of design plans and the construction of the proposed carport that has been submitted by Mr. John Soul. Sincerely, Susan and Earl Stock, 15 North May.
All right, John, you have anything else to say or is that it?
I just think it's a reasonable request.
All right, testimony from the floor will be closed at this time and will deliberate and render a decision. Practical difficulty and undue hardship. Oh, shall we make a motion?
Now I'll make a motion. I move to grant a variance to the property 13 North May Avenue from ACC 231001 Table A, Schedule of Volts Controls, to allow instruction of an attached breezeway to a house with a side setback of 0.7 inch, I'm sorry, 0 foot and 0.7 inch where eight feet is the minimum requirement, and combined side setback of 11.8 feet where 20 feet is the minimum requirement.
Second.
Okay, let's discuss practical difficulty and undue hardship.
Well, I think we would be creating an unnecessary hardship in insisting that Mr. Soul use only his garage, which apparently is often full of water. As we've already said, as he said, and as many of us who live on the East Side know, these lots are small, and we see from his packet that there are many other properties in the area which either have a very far back garage or an attached breezeway. So I don't think we need to insist that he suffer this hardship.
Exceptional circumstances pretty much follow along the same lines?
Yeah, I think so, but he also mentions the topography of the lots sloping gently back and causing the water to flow that way.
Preservation of equal property rights. We've been shown several pictures in his packet of other homes in the vicinity that have similar carports and structures other than garages to get out of elements and park their vehicles. Minimum variance?
I think so. He's not asking to build a garage, he's just building a breezeway.
And the neighbor that's closest is in approval.
Right.
So absence of detriment, his closest neighbor is in approval of passing the variance, and it's certainly not of a general nature, nature of the conditions or situations of that piece of property. So are we ready to vote? John, will you start it to me?
I will, yes.
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 And I vote yes. John, you have your variance.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Paul, our appellant for case number two here, the Dobbles. Are the Dobbles here?
I talked to them earlier today, and after further review, I decided this probably was not a case for the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's more of a safety issue. If it was a fence that was lower than the required limit in the code or a setback issue, then I felt it would be, they could come here, since it is in Title 23. But this is more of a safety issue, looking at the high residential code and the building codes, that I've determined that this is not an acceptable method.
Okay.
Putting a canopy over it, and I talked to them and they were in grants, and any other decisions will be made between them and I as to what they end up doing.
Okay. Onto case number three, 11-07V, Zone M, 2131 East State Street, Troy Miller representing Holzer Clinic appellate. Paul, would you give us a little background on this side issue?
If you've been out there familiarly, that they changed the entrance to that little business area from Super 8 and the garage repair all the way back to Holzer, they moved one central entrance, which is right opposite the exit to the highway. When they did that, it made it more difficult for, obviously, the Super 8 to advertise where they are and for people to understand how to get to it. So as it said in the letter that Holzer Clinic provided, that they had an agreement with Super 8, that they would try to put a sign on Holzer's property so that people could find the entrance to Super 8 a little more easily. They did realize that there was law against all side directional signs, and they made that promise, and thus, that's why they're here. And also, Andy?
I can throw that out in the air, speaking for. Andy Stone, the Director of Engineering Public Works, has requested that you seriously consider this. He was going to send me over a letter before to you, but he did not get it to me on time. So part of the agreement, he was in party, he was part of that deal, was for the part of the road to be put out there in front of all those buildings.
And he thinks it would be a good idea. Why? Why, John? Does he think it'd be?
I can't speak to it on that.
Okay.
Sorry.
I guess I have a question about that entrance. Is that, is that now or will it become a city street?
That access drive in front is a city street.
Okay, does it have a name?
No. Don't. Call it out.
Okay, well then, here's my comment on all of that, is that, you know, whether you're Googling.
It's just, we kept it as East State Street.
Well, I've seen that in several Holzers, and I thought for sure that that was a street. It just would seem most appropriate that the city would name that street, and it's not that the city hasn't in the past moved people's addresses around, they did that down off of Union Street. So it would be at least as appropriate to have those businesses, and that's quite a few out there, have a correct address.
We proposed to put a street name to that, and much to the opposition from those businesses wanting to keep the East State Street address. And so the city agreed to leave it as is. And then we went through numerous meetings with the administrator, with all the property owners, business owners, the administration on that. So it is remaining.
Is the city responsible for maintaining that street?
It's, that is city property.
I thought that was city property.
Yes. City did acquire that property, but that roof is on.
So at this point, it's a spur of each of these things?
It is basically an access drive off of East State Street.
So if it had a name, then you could just Google the name and you wouldn't have to worry about.
The business owners, so Googling East State Street was coming up better, that's what they wanted, it would cap. So we kept it that way.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Stone?
I apologize having to teach you about your time.
If you please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Troy Miller. I'm representing Holzer Clinic at 2131 East State Street. Basically, prior to, I just joined Holzer Clinic recently, and practically to me, there was a deal struck to move the entrance, as you'll see on the third slide there with the big red X's, that needed entrance to those businesses there prior to Holzer Clinic being built. And when Holzer Clinic was built down off of East State Street, ODOT came in and requested at the permission of the businesses, to my understanding, that they moved the entrance for safety. John, correct me if I'm wrong there, because I'm kind of reading between the lines, but they asked to move it for safety. Super 8 was the only tenant in the property line there that was very concerned, because obviously, the turn-in was right in front of Super 8, and they felt that that gave them the greatest visibility. And so in trying to negotiate through ODOT and through with Andy and my predecessor, they met with Super 8 and said, you know, we'll try to put a sign out by the highway. And come to find out, you can't put a sign out by the highway without an act of, literally, I think Congress, I don't know, I think it goes to the state level and has to be federally funded or something crazy. Anyway, so we kind of went through a couple iterations, and we came up with the minimum sign that was allowed. Super 8 proposed, they wanted a big, you know, 32-foot high sign. And so we're asking for a three foot by one foot, which is what's allowed in regulations. The complication that we had, where we ran a file of the rules with the city, was that those off-site premise signs normally are for churches and hospitals, et cetera, so they don't comply. But we're willing to give up, you know, rights on our land, we're in favor of the electricity and the signage and everything to try to make Super 8 whole. I will tell you, it is kind of crazy when you come down off the highway, you do turn right, okay? Even though we had that one sign straight ahead, and Holzer's pretty easy to see because it's a big building to the left. But those businesses, you just kind of assume you can turn down and you can turn in right there under the bypass. And so, you know, I mean, they're struggling as a hotel, and they're just, you know, they're saying, you know, we think this may help. And we've kind of delayed getting it in for two years and kind of went back and forth on what we can do. And so this landed on my desk to get done. So I'm asking you to pay your consideration and hoping me get this sign in for Super 8 and all their business.
What's this other sign? Why is this sign here?
That sign is the actual monument sign that is our sign, they got torn down in the tornado. But I wanted to make sure that you saw everything that was going to be there, because I'm not trying to hide anything. That sign is actually being fabricated right now. It's under the, it fell under the permit guidelines that was already there. So, you know, basically, the only thing that we changed is we changed color on that sign.
So you're replacing this sign?
That's correct.
And you have a permit for this sign?
Yes, correct.
And with all of the arrows, why isn't, I mean, Super 8's there, why not give them a double spot since you have extra spots? Looks like you have enough room on your sign, or am I incorrect? They don't have enough room on their sign?
They don't feel like that that is big enough to represent, you know, a directional thing, so for them. So that, you know, basically, that giving up the entrance to the Super 8, that it wouldn't give them enough visibility where people could see it, so.
What is, what is the size of these individual boxes in the columns?
I think they're five inches high and 33 feet wide. Is that right?
I think they're 33 feet, so that's three feet by five.
Thirty-three dashes wide. Thirty-three inches.
Inches, three inches.
Five inches.
I think they're taller than five, but.
Yeah, you too.
I mean, it's just, I was, I mean, I don't know, six inches maybe. I mean, it's not, they're not real tall.
Did all of the businesses that are listed on, in the picture here on the sign, did they request their names to be on that sign?
Yeah, my understanding is, you know, when they put the, when they put the roadway in there, we agreed to put the sign up as the, you know, the main tenant, and all the businesses who were there, we put their names on that sign.
So you have a permit for this sign with all these other directional signs?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, but you do have room, you could actually move somebody over and also give Super 8 three little blocks there, right? So that would make it whatever, even, it could be 18 meters by whatever.
It's, hotels request to have their own free.
I know that, I'm just saying that that is.
Are they here?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, the person of Super 8 is in Chicago, and so, I mean, and maybe it's my misunderstanding, but I was told that I had to represent him because it was on our property. And so I did talk to them today. He, the guy at the hotel, was going to come, but his car was in the shop and wanted me to come and get in, and I barely made the meet. So I didn't go down and get him, so it's partially my fault, and I'll take responsibility for that.
I was down there a couple of days ago and counted 17 businesses other than Holzer. Holzer would be the 18th.
Yeah, actually, this sign. Yeah, actually, this sign, like, every spot's taken, so, although, you know, there's blue, this was just a rendering drawn up so that you would know, but like, every, there's something in every space.
You mean, are all 17 going to be represented on this sign, or only what I see right here?
Um, all the, all the spaces are taken, I'm, it's all 17. I, I'm not sure what businesses are on there. So, whatever, whatever was on the sign when the tornado, tornado ripped it down, is, those are the, the businesses that are all back on there.
Yeah, because there's only 12 spots. If I look at this, if those directional arrows stay-
Yeah.
So, there's 17 businesses.
That's about how many I counted, so there's either, more businesses have come there. Okay.
So, I noticed that Super 8 had a very large standing Super 8 sign. Has that been there before it was annexed?
Yeah.
So, there's already one, our compliance sign, due to being grandfathered in, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that was the floor. That is correct.
Okay.
And who is responsible for that sign at the stop sign coming off the freeway? Is that the City Street Department?
You talking about the stop sign?
Well, like, at the bottom of the stop sign, meaning against a stop sign, is this triangular diamond-shaped sign that says, "Businesses across," I forget what it says, anyway, directs you across the road to the unnamed road.
Yeah, ODOT did that when they had all the rock there. I think that's gone.
It was there today.
Oh, was there today?
Okay, 5:30.
Okay, they were cleaning up on the rock, and I mean, they're taking all that stuff out there, we talked to ODOT.
So, that's there, so, not this time.
One of the provisions, as Troy is saying, for that road to be built and that access to be built, the problem with ODOT was that that entrance to those businesses got relocated, so it was directly in line with the ramp coming off the freeway. And, which took away the entrance to these other businesses. So, the sign, obviously, that was permitted, they did get that for the 12, however many spots are on there. It was destroyed in the tornado, they are in the process of re-permitting that with us, if you change it. Sounds like they're keeping it the same, and which we wouldn't have to do. And then, the hotel is, like I said, requesting that they have their own directional sign, an agreement that was made between them and, and Holzer before probably any of us were here. So, a verbal agreement, handshake agreement, so.
Well, some of us, a lot of us were here then.
No, no, I'm not, as far as the permitting process, and Andy and everybody else, as far as that goes.
So, the actual road was changed because of ODOT?
ODOT's request.
And that that-
Would not permit the road to be, Andy can speak more to this, but the, the ODOT request or required that the access to those businesses be relocated to where it is now.
To have one access, basically.
Right.
Right or left.
That is correct. They didn't want the-
At the ramp, yeah, that was, that would be too-
Dangerous.
Dangerous.
So.
So, that, whether Holzer agreed to this or not, obviously, it was going covert, correct?
Well, no, apparently, there was a bunch of agreements that had to be signed, all the property owners, to let the land, the city have the land to put in the access with, and one of the agreements was that Holzer, that the motel requested, is that they got this sign, for them to sign the agreement. That they, they, this was part of the deal, they would release their rights to allow this to happen. Otherwise, the city might not have ever acquired this property, and the road may never have been built.
So, was that an agreement that was signed by the city also?
The city did not sign it, no, but we're aware of it. So, that's why Andy was going to write into that, or write a letter to them.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of their quest? Anyone wishing to speak in general comment? Or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. Miller, if you don't have anything else to say, we'll close the floor. So, we'll take deliberation and render a decision if someone would make a motion.
I move that, for the property located at 2131 East State Street, represented by Troy Miller, known as Holzer 20, case number 11-07V, would consider variance for this appelle, from ACC 230313K to allow placement of an off-site directional sign to a business with such sign is allowed only for church, school, community center, library, hospital, museum, public art gallery, cultural arts center, similar public, semi-public institutional building.
John, could I suggest that you might put in the size of the sign as part of this It's one by three.
One by three.
Which is a directional code.
To allow placement of an off-site directional, one foot by three foot sign, wait a minute, to allow placement correct, to a business where such sign is allowed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that good?
Yeah. And the request is for a lighted sign. I don't know if we need to address that or not.
An illuminated one by three, that's it.
It's illuminated, not, so it would just be, it lights would shine out, you could see it, it's not having a spotlight on it?
Internally.
It's a lighted sign.
It would be internally, so.
This is lit internally, so this will be lit internally.
All right, thank you for that information.
Yes, I did, yeah.
That makes sense, because, you know, this is a 24/7 business, you want to be able to see it at night.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's discuss practical difficulty or undue hardship because of the situation.
Well, I would say, since the road was changed, ODOT managed that finding the location of the Super 8 becomes slightly more difficult as you're coming in off the, you know, onto the access road. So, a directional sign.
Well, so that they do have a street there, which they could name in some unique name and, you know, have a new address.
Except, there's only one way to get to that, that access road. There's only one place to get there.
Right.
So, you would also have to have all of the addresses to know which way to turn, left or right, if you're looking for an address. So, I think the directional sign should be arrow.
Above and beyond what's already on the sign.
Well, yes, obviously, we're looking at a larger illuminated sign than the smaller illuminated sign with 17 or however many other businesses.
I don't see the hardship in that, though.
The hardship is hardship that we would create by denying this hardship that is unnecessary to the purposes of the code. So, it's not that the owner would have his hardship, it's that they would have a hardship because of our no vote, if such a thing occurred.
Okay, that makes sense to you?
Yeah, it makes sense.
It makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me, yes.
Okay, exceptional circumstances.
What Michelle said, that was exceptional circumstances, I guess, that defines a no-
I said it too soon.
Okay. Preservation of equal property rights. I, I just think that if, if Super 8 gets their lit sign, they're going to have 16 hours-
And they're going to say that you're right down to where- The business, you know, the other businesses are closed after 5:00 maybe, but this guy's auto-tax open, you know, probably 24/7.
But it seems to me that part of the exceptional circumstance is that Super 8 felt that they had a deal with Holzer, which of course, they were not authorized to make. Nevertheless, I think they acted in good faith. And apparently, from what you've said, they also had sort of made a deal with the city, and so-
An unsigned deal.
Well, nevertheless, they seemed to have encountered something from Holzer, and exceeded to ODOT's request, and allowed their property to be, to be used by Holzer, I think, or the city. And now, now what? They, all of those things are null and void.
Well, could you find Super 8 without a sign there?
I'm not sure. I don't see too well at night. I might need a sign.
Well, they do have that huge sign already, that's, I think that's part of my problem, is that-
And it will also be lit.
They do have a large Motel 8 sign, I mean, that's what struck me before I even saw Holzer, and I go out to Holzer.
Well, a lot of people have come out of town, so they may have never been here before, and it would be difficult for them to identify the place.
Minimum variance. But certainly, they're asking for the minimum variance, though, I'm not quite sure about the lighting of the sign, as the minimum.
Well, again, it, it is to be identified at all hours of the day, so it's one of the signs that, if we approved it, I would think would be more appropriately lighted than many of the signs that we've allowed to be lighted around the town.
Absence of detriment?
This actually might be helping the traffic a little bit.
Well, I think that's the whole purpose, is to negotiate the traffic, and, you know, my memory is hazy, but it seems to me, when Holzer first came to the board and wanted signs initially, they wanted two signs at both entrances to Holzer. Was that in anybody's memory beside mine? So, we gave him a variance a long time ago, for two signs, one here, one there. And it was not at all in my thinking, that the sign would be a sign that not only identified Holzer's direction, but that had these other entities on it. However, that's in the past. So, neither here nor there. I don't like this little sign, I think it's kind of tacky, but in the interest of people who've given up some of their rights, in thinking that they were going to be treated fairly, from what they understood, I would certainly reluctantly, but nevertheless, I would think that it's only fair that they have a sign, it's not very big. Okay, I think there are some extenuating circumstances that would mean that you don't have to give a sign to every other person who wants it, not all the rest of them have given up something in order to allow ODOT to have the entrance where they wanted it.
I believe they had.
Are we in absence of detriment or general nature?
Yes, we're still in absence of detriment.
Well, I think that, um, nothing to say.
Okay, not of a general nature?
No, I don't think it is.
It certainly is.
No.
Now, if there's no further discussion on our findings, we'll start deliberating with Michelle.
Can I discuss one thing?
Yes.
I wish that we would have had Mr. Stone here, because it's his institutional memory, and he was there for the planning and all of that, and I'm, that is a concern of mine, that we may be voting one way or another without all the information.
Do you suggest anyone can confirm this?
I mean, I understand all the good faith in what you're saying, John, but, I mean, he was there during that planning phase, and when all these things occurred.
We can provide additional information for Mr. Stone at the next meeting, and you guys are allowed to hear this case again, based on new information. So, depending on how it's voted on today, and what information Mr. Stone may give us, you are certainly entitled to suggest hearing of this case, or rehearing of this case, or reexamining this case.
Or I can try to call him.
Would that be another motion to make that, a postponement, or do we-
I think it would just be that you would feel that you need more information, and you would have to convince the rest of us that we're built, that that information would be valuable enough.
I feel I need more information.
You as well?
Yes, I agree.
Do you have a specific questions, or?
Well, I, I would like to know what was discussed during the planning phases, whether it's ODOT, whether it's the city. I'd like to hear what they said, and if, if this is what they thought it was going to be at the time.
I go back to a few meetings ago, when the city planner, Paul Lo, was here and was able to explain some things to us. And it was really particularly helpful for the case. So, I think in this case, I would, I would agree with Michelle.
That more information is needed.
Especially since we have so many other businesses out there.
I'm in total agreement, and I would say we table this issue until more information-
Just ask you to come before you round it up, so.
So, Mr. Miller, we're tabling this issue, can we get some more information from Mr. Stone?
Okay.
Let me just continue it to next time.
I just think it's a matter of procedure, you need to vote on that.
Oh, we need to vote on it?
On the tabling.
On the tabling?
Yeah.
Oh, all in favor of tabling? Say aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Read it to, it's a date. Our next case is case 11-08S, Zone B3, 10 Graham Drive, Kevin Gillespie, Integrated Services of Appalachian, Ohio appellate. Appellant is requesting a substitution under Athens City Code 23.07.02B for a non-conforming use, a single-family house with first-floor residential use. For a not more objectionable, non-conforming use, a four-unit residential structure with a first-floor residential use.
Two points I want to make, first, concerning procedure and stuff. In the case of a substitution, you don't, as far as I can read in reading this, about the procedure for substitutions, you don't use the six findings that you use for variances. You can use them as a personal reference, but they can't be part of the official decision making process. As I understand it, for a substitution, the board simply discusses the pros and cons of the suggestion. If, putting this, in this case, the four-unit residential structure with first-floor residential use versus what was there before, a single-family home, and if the four-unit residential structure is more objectionable or more non-conform, so we simply discuss that when the time comes. The other thing I want to say is, Integrated Services has an approved permit, right here and now, it needs no variances, needs nothing else, there you can go forward with a three-story, four-unit building. That has been approved by the code office, and by, it's been signed off. So, if they wanted to, starting tomorrow, they could build a three-story apartment building. However, they have tried, what they want to do is, instead of making it three stories, they want to make it two stories, which is where the variance comes in. So, that's the only variance, that's the only non-conformity that we, that should be discussed, is the first-floor residential use. In my opinion, to discuss whether this is a warranted project or a legal project, it should not be part of that directly. It's simply whether, as it's stated, the four-unit building is more non-conforming or not more non-conforming, and what was there before.
Paul, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When was the single-family house removed from the property? How long has that property been removed?
I'm not sure exactly, you can ask the appellate, but I'm not sure exactly that-
End of year. When was the previous?
Late last year, early this year.
Let's wait till he comes to the podium.
Would Mr. Gillespie or his representative, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Kevin Gillespie, 29 Graham Park Boulevard.
So, we were wondering when the previous residence was removed?
And I would need to get back with you with an exact date, but we're thinking approximately a year.
Okay.
And your reasoning that you feel that, that a four-unit residential structure is less objectionable or than a single-family house on the first floor, on the first level?
Well, I have to be honest with you, I, I would need counsel to ask a technical question about substitution, you know, I don't know the city code, or the, you know, the zoning minutia to the extent that the professional staff or the citizen board does. Here's what I, here's what I can- Here's what I can tell you about this simple matter as I see it. And here's my best answer to your question, and that is, the issue before the zoning Board tonight is whether you wish to grant a substitution. We have a very high-quality building project ready to go, but fully complies with all the requirements of the existing zoning. And we're prepared to go with that. And there's some sense in the broad community that it would be better to build the same project on the ground level that we require the substitution for. And that's my best understanding without counsel of what the issue is before the zoning Board tonight.
I'm going to speak for you and modify that slightly because you're not really asking us to substitute a two-story, four-unit with residential on the bottom for the three-story. I don't think that's the issue.
So that's the question.
What you are asking for is to substitute this new structure, two stories, four units, residential on the bottom floor...
For what existed.
For what was there before.
Oh, that's true. Well, that's true.
Which was a non-conforming building, meaning a one-family house that was in what happened to turn out to be the wrong zone, B3.
You see what I mean? That's what I... You've done so much better than us.
Okay. So the house that was there had residential, it was a residential unit with people living on the first floor. It was non-conforming?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the question is, is this new structure going to be more the same or less objectionable than what was there before? That's the substitution. The two-story residential on the bottom for the one-story residential on the bottom.
Yes. Yes, that's it.
Two-story, four-unit. Two-story, four-unit.
Oh, they're saying three now.
Three.
Well, okay. They have permission to construct three stories with nothing on the bottom floor...
But parking.
With only the intention of keeping the business on the second floor, which is in effect the first floor because there's nothing on the first floor. Okay. But the real, so you have to keep that in mind. They have permission to do that.
I do know that. I watched the...
Okay. But the real substitution is what was there before, which had residential on the first floor, for a business that will have residential on the first floor. And that's the real issue. It's not the size, it's whether there can be a residential unit on the first floor or whether it has to be business.
I did get clarification. You're summarizing very well. I did speak with Law Director Pat Line, and that's exactly the way he interpreted to this, the way it should be heard. And it's your decision. Is this three-story, two-story, four-unit residential use more objectionable than the existing single-family, more or less...
It's not more objectionable, it's conforming.
Right.
Is it less conforming?
But I think...
More conforming?
The way you need to stress is a B3 zone.
Yes.
That's what he wanted to make sure. This is a B3 zone.
Yes.
So, is the one-family basically more objectionable, less objectionable versus equal to a single-family?
And again, it's not less objectionable. Is it more or less non-conforming?
Non-conforming.
Would it be more non-conforming than what was there before, which was already non-conforming?
Which doesn't exist anymore.
Well, that's really irrelevant, I think. Not you.
So do you have anyone else to comment on right now?
Not really.
Okay. You may be called back.
Okay. I'll be fine.
At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone wishing to...
John Valentor, I'm a senior architect. You've seen me before here. And I just want to make sure that you all understand that the use of apartments on this B zone is a principally permitted use. It's not a non-conforming use. I just want to make sure that that was clear. And I think that also, I don't know if you've got in front of you, but the Planning Commission, we've been going through the processes to get this building approved. And they've also written a letter of consent or whatever for our request tonight for a substitution. Hopefully, you've got that in front of you as well.
We do. That will be read into the record.
Okay. Out of the memorandum. Gotcha.
I have that. I mean, there's nothing, we've done this already. Unless you have any questions for me.
Well, I just want to...
Go ahead and reiterate that.
Yeah. It is a permitted use. The non-conformity is the issue of whether there will be residential...
It's on the first floor.
On the first floor. So in that sense, that's the non-conformity.
Correct.
The use is permitted.
The use is permitted.
Right.
And the size of the building, if we have to go to three stories, is also permitted for this is own in the city. So there's, the building will get built. At this current time, the owners do not have any real use for a commercial application on the first floor. So we are going to leave that vacant and elevate the structure with possibly the addition of commercial use on the first floor or the ground floor level in the future. It will be designed to accommodate that. But we don't feel that this might be the best solution for the neighborhood, to put a three-story building at this location on Graham Avenue. And as I've went through this before, I'm just going to say it one more time, we tried to design this building to be a, the building behind it is a two-story structure. We were trying to lower the profile of this structure by the design to actually be more like a story and a half. It's not going to be a large footprint or a high elevation in terms of the effect that this building is going to have when you drive by it. We're not using trusses and an eight-foot ceiling on the second floor. We're using the attic space to create the second floor of this building, which is going to keep the eve height at approximately 12 feet instead of what normally would be in a two-story building, at least 19 feet. Dormers are going to provide lighting and openings for the second story of this structure. The footprint of the first floor is much larger than the footprint of the second floor. We won't be using the roofs as dead space on that second floor design. I think you guys have all seen that before.
Yes.
We don't have a drawing of what you are proposing, the three-story building in here?
Well, I want to see. I need to see a drawing of a building.
I mean, that's the gist of this, is not... I've got drawings showing both versions. They've got one back there showing what we proposed, the footprint. I've got sketches showing what, and we've already engineered, we've engineered the entire thing to become a three-story structure. That's where we have to go. We just don't think it would be in the best interest of the community to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. So not to be dense, I just need to wrap my brain around this.
Okay.
So looking at the memorandum from the Planning Commission, they discussed their approval of the original project that was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Michelle, at this time, for the general public...
Want to read it?
If you do not have that, would you read that into the record, please?
Okay. This is a memorandum to Board of Zoning Appeals from the Athens City Planning Commission, subject recommendation, date April 20th, 2011. On March 16th, 2011, the Athens City Planning Commission met to review Case Number 11-02, Integrated Services, 10 Graham Drive, Title 41. The Planning Commission moved to recommend approval of the project as submitted to the commission. During the review process, the commission members discussed their approval of the original project that was initially denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The commission members felt that the original plans better suited the neighborhood and zoning designation. The Planning Commission members would like to convey to the Board of Zoning Appeals their support of any formal appeal submitted by Integrated Services to the Board requesting a substitution. Please feel free to contact the commission members with questions or concerns. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
And once again, you're being prompted with comments, and we don't have time to respond or question anyone on the Planning Commission. It's difficult.
So what I'm wrapping my brain around then is that the Planning Commission is basically saying they like this better.
Yes, that's what they said.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in general comment? Now, before I ask if there's anyone to speak in opposition, general comment, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Melena Miller. I live at 25 Graham Drive. And so I wasn't really certain what this was all about this evening, so I'm trying to, as you say, wrap your mind around it. So may I just ask a question? The drawing that you just held up, that rendering was of the two-story, John?
Over.
Okay. Okay. So my understanding from the Planning Commission is they are willing to accept that substitution. Is that what you read just now?
Yes.
I mean, that's what you understand. So, I mean, there are lots of concerns in my neighborhood, and I'm sure my neighbors are going to want to express this, but one of my main concerns was the height of this particular development. Because unless we live, and most of us don't, within 500 feet of the previous home that was there, we aren't notified about what's happening with who bought the place, what plans there were, as you know. That's how it works. And so we're kind of all latecomers to even knowing what's happened and who's bought the place and what was going to take place there. In fact, I just found out about three weeks ago, and I think most of my neighbors didn't know at all. So my real concern was, I'm not sure I'm completely in support of this project, but it's a little late for that now. So I am in support of their substitution of this height limit, though, because my concern is that any three-story dwelling there would set a precedent on that street for just perhaps moving up. I'm not sure where the B zoning is cut off, actually.
Right there.
Is it right there?
Yep.
Okay, so... And I'm not next door to it, so I can't speak for the lady who does live next door to it. Perhaps she wouldn't mind somebody being three stories there, you know, looking down into her home, but I wouldn't want that. But I just think, there isn't anything else in that whole area that's three-story. And I think it sets a precedent that would be very unfavorable to me, anyway, living just a block and three houses away from that. So is that the only thing that's under consideration tonight? I mean, is that the only thing I can speak to about that residence or about that dwelling? That's the only thing that's being proposed tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in general comment?
Yes.
Do you think, the name and address for the record?
Jackie Brown, 24 Graham Drive. My general comment is, today's the first day I heard the truth about what was going to be built there. When they started to dig in the beginning, I asked specifically what was going to be I was told it was going to be general apartments. Had I known that it was going to be something different, I surely would have come here to discuss it, to listen, to learn about it. So my objective is, our neighborhood has been in the dark. I don't think that's fair. I think everybody here and the whole street would have been here at the initial if we were told the truth about what it was going to be in the beginning. That's all I think I know.
Could you tell us what you suppose the truth to be about the apartment?
I was told it was going to be general apartments.
And now it's...
This does not sound like general apartments.
What does it sound like?
It sounds like a service to at need, at risk, people who need a lot of help.
You mean poor people?
No, I mean people with addictions. In their pamphlet, it says addictions. It says youth and young adults with social, behavioral, and learning challenges, people with disabilities seeking competitive employment, dot, 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 related to addictions, mental illness, and co-occurring disorders. Families involved with county, juvenile, justice, and child welfare systems. That doesn't sound to me like anybody could go rent an apartment from them. Is that, can anybody get this apartment, or does it have to be people with those specific...
Actually, you would have to address that to Mr. Gillespie because that's not an issue this Board can address. What we can address is whether the building that they want to put up with two stories, four units, is more or less non-conforming than what was there before. So we can't speak to who will live there.
My whole issue, though, is that we were in the dark and we would have been here at the initial meetings.
It's typical for the Code Office to notify adjacent properties, but they don't try to necessarily notify every person on the street. They address it to those most directly affected, meaning those adjacent to the particular property.
And it is advertised in the paper and posted on our website.
But my issue was that when I asked about what it was, it wasn't.
Well, I can't address that.
We can't really address that. Again, the issue is strictly, you know, they're requesting a substitution from a single-family first floor to a four-unit...
First floor.
First floor. And that's all we need to discuss. Thank you for your input.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
So if anyone else wishes to speak in general comment, please keep that in mind of that...
There's an opposition section to...
Yes, I know.
My name's Betty Sexton, 17 Graham Drive. I just wanted to ask for clarification because my husband and I were here initially. What I thought one of the reasons was for your denying the two-story building initially was not only because of the business zoning thing, but there weren't enough parking spaces there for the amount of units that they were going to have in there, and the business also takes up parking spaces.
They had the number required.
Is that a moving point? They have enough parking places for three, six, seven, ten bedroom?
Actually, they reduced it to eight people, and they originally asked for 10 people and eight parking spaces. And then it's changed to...
All right. That was my clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else in general comment? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Where do we go if this goes on, if we don't go to the zone?
It's not, it's already done.
But it's not right.
It's already done.
If you'd like to speak, you should do so.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Walton. I live at 20 Graham Drive. I live on that street, just up the street from where the proposed property is. So as I sit and listen to proceedings, it occurs to me that, much like my neighbor Jackie has stated, that I'm a little bit late to the game. I was not aware of what was going on. I recognize that what we're talking about now is, it sounds to me like it's been synopsized into three stories versus two stories. into three stories versus two stories. But I'd like to appeal to the Board here, or the Commission, or whoever you are. We were not informed of this, and in fact, roughly nine months ago, I don't know the exact date of the removal of the single-family dwelling, but it was not a year ago. It was late summer to mid-fall, I believe, when the house was removed. I went down and asked the business there what was happening, what was going on. I was told the parking structure is being built to support the building across the street. And then when the parking structure started getting built, I was curious why there was only half of the lot was paved, and I went and asked again, and two or three different people told me that they were building a parking for this business across the street. There was no mention to me of an apartment building or something coming in. So like Jackie, I was not aware of it. I did not pursue it, because I, in good faith, trusted that our neighbors would be honest and straightforward with us. Having said that, you know, I'm in a situation where I moved into a nice neighborhood because it is a family-oriented neighborhood. I realize that some of this may be not germane, but I feel compelled to state my case here. My wife and I, as we looked for a safe neighborhood for our children to live in, we have four children, including a special needs child, as we looked for a neighborhood, we spent about a year and a half looking closely. We lived in Athens already, so we knew the area well, and we chose this neighborhood because it was amenable to families. And as we met our neighbors, we have wonderful neighbors. It's a very neighborly environment. People walk their dogs up and down the street, and their children in strollers, and it's a great neighborhood. I do have some concerns about the type of apartment building, the type of tenants they're looking to put in there. Couple things. One is when we paid for our house, when we bought our house, we invested in a neighborhood and in a community. I have spoken today with somebody who works in the real estate market, and stated to me that the real estate values would immediately decrease for all houses in that general neighborhood with such a dwelling. I would like to restate, as Jackie mentioned, I'm taking this from the brochure from Integrated Services, the people who own this facility. I state who they're looking, the people and families we serve are a diverse group, but typically consist of families involved with county juvenile justice and child welfare systems, youth and young adults with social, behavioral, and learning challenges, and people who are homeless or at imminent risk of homelessness related to addiction, mental illness, and co-occurring disorders. I have a number of friends who work in the mental health arena, as well as with my profession. I have worked in the past with psychiatrists and the mental health profession. I'm aware of some of the challenges that these folks face. Everybody I've talked to in my neighborhood is in full agreement and support of helping homeless people. This is not about not trying to help homeless people out. It's a question of, is this appropriate for that neighborhood? Is this appropriate for that community? And the overwhelming feeling is that it's probably not the right location for it. Now, I would like to say one thing regarding this zoning appeal board here. A number of years ago, about two or three years ago, when my wife and I moved in the neighborhood, we came before this very board and appealed for, or tried to get a variance on a fence that we were building. Most people I see here tonight, my good neighbors, were here in opposition to my building my fence. And I have to be honest, at the time, I was a little upset. I still love them. I thought they were great people, but I was a little upset that I got that opposition. We thought we were trying to make a nice neighborhood for ourselves and for them as neighbors. In hindsight, now as I get to know the neighborhood a little bit better, I understand that the zoning board made the right decision in not granting us the variance, and I understand where my neighbors, from their vantage point, where they came with this. So in hindsight, I think the right decision was made. So Heath, I recognize that maybe this is difficult to... Kevin, I apologize. Thank you. Kevin, I realize maybe this is difficult to see your neighbors coming here and in opposition to you, but I want you to know that it's in the best interest of our neighborhood. I have, I work in the business world. I recognize that also that you have made investments and hope to have a good return on your investment. I'm sure you didn't buy that property with the intent of losing money or anything like that, and my assumption is that you feel that this is the best investment for your property. However, if you look at the overall value of the community from an investment perspective, this would certainly be detrimental to the property values in the community.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in general comment?
You might want to remind them.
Please try to limit your opposing views and try to keep it on topic of, the project is happening one way or another, it's just a matter of single first floor or above first floor.
All right, I'll try to keep it on topic. First, it's my understanding...
Name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm Jeff Dill. I live at 31 Graham Drive. And it's my understanding that Chris Garrick made a phone call today with his opposition, and I'd like for that to be read into the record, if that's possible.
Yes, I was going to do that at the end of...
Could you do it now, please?
Yes. I received two phone calls today, one from Chris Garrick, who resides at 49 Mutal Place, Athens, Ohio. He called to express his opposition to the board and requested, please do not pass a substitution variance for 10 Graham Drive. Also, Laura Deal, 41 Jacobs Drive, called and objected to the substitution request and expressed opposition to us passing the substitution variance as well. So those two people made phone calls to me.
Okay. All right, first of all, I agree with everything Mike said, so I won't go there. But it's important to note that, you know, I understand the technicalities and the limited scope of what you have to decide, but it needs to be on the record that this particular property, however it's zoned, is adjacent to a single-family residential neighborhood, and this whole thing is an end run around the spirit of the zoning law, whether anybody chooses to admit it or not. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We do have a letter in our packets also.
Well, that pertained to another time. It's dated, March, it's dated 2006, January, which is the first day. Okay, the floor is now closed, and we will... So please come to the podium, be brief, and state your name and address for the record.
Name is Linda Miller, town address 23 Graham Drive. Question for John, how many square feet are we talking about in the...
Footprint?
Yeah. Just roughly.
Do you guys have a plan there?
We have a drawing, but I don't know if we have a plan.
The drawing that we turned down the last time.
It just says, construct four apartments on...
I understand there's 355 blocks. The house was only two...
You're going to need to come up to the front of your mic, because we can't hear you.
We looked that up before, the grass beating. The footprint of the new building, the proposed building, isn't that much bigger than the project that was on there before. And again, that's what we need to be looking at, is the substitution.
I can't hear you, John. The new project isn't a lot...
It's not much bigger than the single-family home that was there.
It is bigger, but not substantially.
Is that facing the parking lot?
I'm sorry?
Is the front of that, John, facing the parking lot that we're looking at?
What you're looking at is facing Graham Avenue, right?
Okay.
Parking lot is on that side. As I say, we use door doors, the roof height is low, and we put some balconies. The second floor is only...
So this is our alley, this is not what we're looking at this time. Where are the dumpsters? I can't see where we dumped them, right? And where do you put your ads?
We just need to know it's three stories. There's three bedrooms, you need two bedrooms. Three bedrooms, it's a three-bedroom...
Why don't we ask these people what their choice would be of the two?
I'm saying I don't want to...
They're confused, but they think we can choose from those two. But you have to make sure that they...
I think you can just...
The guy that's looking at this building is on the far side of the lot.
But don't put it... Did you have a chance to see the drawing? I know it was... I will look, but I know what was there was like a double Y. And given, I assume, a setback, I can't imagine if the footprint isn't a whole lot bigger than what was there, how are you... I can't imagine four apartments with two to three bedrooms, but that's just kind of, it's going to be squished.
Let Betty propose this thought, not only to you, to the rest of the people in the audience.
Actually, I think you should have been able to finish exactly what you're addressing, which is the size of it. And what they're suggesting is it's not really going to be hugely different.
I will go to my microphone.
I think the real issue is they have permission to build a three-story building.
There will be nothing on the bottom.
Okay, so the first story will be elevated, one story, and then above it will be a second story, but the overall effect will be a three-story building. They have permission to build that. So if that is your choice, then encourage us to vote no tonight. If you'd rather have the two-story building that's smaller, less obtrusive, then encourage us to vote for this variance tonight, because those are your choices. Three-story building, two-story building. Like Gotti said, they're going to build one or the other.
That was approved by the Planning Commission.
And could I add something to that? Because what is being presented to us is that, or so it seems, that it's one or the other. But the architect and the owner of the property and the business has gone out of their way to come back here to approach the Planning Commission, to put a little pressure on us to approve this two-story building, which would lead me to believe they really don't want to do a three-story building? Do they not have the funds?
They don't want to do it because they think it's inappropriate.
So to say that, they are saying they will do that, build a three-story building, but maybe within some design plan of theirs that we're unaware of, because there seems to be a lot of things that people were unaware of throughout this whole process. Maybe they really don't want to build a three-story building.
They've said repeatedly that they do not want to build a three-story building. They would prefer...
Or maybe they would not build...
That speculation is...
That you can't. But if they can say it's one or the other, then you have to ask a little openness in the thinking that you're not being pushed against the wall.
I can't go into their minds.
What is the question is, is this either use more non-conforming than the double Y that was there? Of course it is. I mean, very much so. So I don't know what you have to vote for.
The issue of non-conformity is not the size, not the number of stories. The non-conformity is only whether or not they can have a first floor on the ground in which they allow people to live. That's the issue.
Because it's located in a B3 zone. That little piece of property is in a transitional zone that shifts from the B3. Right next door, it starts the residential. So it's a transitional from there to residential.
And then the next piece, when the older lady who lives right next door sells hers, and somebody wants to transition it a little bit more...
It stops right there. It ends there and becomes an R-zone.
Right.
So it's not going to filter into the neighborhood of seeing three-story apartment complexes in our neighborhood. It's just like a hat.
It's an R2 zone.
It's an R2.
It's not too...
So it stops right there. That piece of property requires that if you're going to build on the first floor, you can't have residential on the first floor. It must be second floor or above.
Think of Court Street. There are no residents except two grandfathers. It's business. It's business.
So they're asking to substitute the pillar vacant potential business area to lower it down and start the residential on street level, rather than by code, without anyone's permission, to start it on the second level. So it's a matter of what's more objectionable.
Do you want a taller bit?
Do you want a taller bit? It's going to happen one way or the other. Do you want a taller one, or do you want a shorter?
Sure.
Shorter.
Okay.
So now...
Well, I've also been, both for, in a situation like that on the west side, where there was a zoning change, so those are going to be changed.
Yes, we can't change the code. We can't change the code. The law can't change.
But it can't happen.
Yes, it can.
Correct. That's what I say. You got a name for it here?
That they're not going to change a B3 zone into an R2 zone.
That can't be changed.
No.
It could be, but you can ask all those businesses that are on East State Street to disappear it? I do think so.
So this is a very rare instance. It's in that transitional little piece, and the person that owns that piece of property, your neighbor, is choosing to go that way. And he's simply asking, can I put it at eye level, or do you want to have to look up at it?
And I'd like to add, this is a double Y, and if it was changed to an R2, that's a duplex. So they could build two duplexes side by side on a set of two parcels and meet the requirements that they're asking for here with no conditions.
So we're closing the floor?
May I just say one?
You'll need to come to the podium quickly and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Clara Squibb, and my husband and I live on the corner of Jacobson and Crane. We've been there for 49 years this summer, and we've enjoyed our neighborhood so much. And children are growing at the Far East End, and they walk by our house with their parents and their dogs. And it is a worry to me, and my children are gone, what is going to happen, who goes into these apartments? If you could tell me that there'll be no problems there, and I'll go along with it, because we pay a lot of taxes, and I don't mind that, but will my taxes go down and my property value goes down? I'm really, and I've talked to several people higher up, I didn't get to the mayor, but I can't believe the city is doing this to one of their older neighborhoods, that we've all enjoyed our neighborhood. We've seen people come and go, and it just breaks my heart to think how people are going to feel in moving in our neighborhood, if there's people that have problems. We have a lot of places where they can go, and as I say, we pay taxes, and we're willing to help people, but I think when you come into a nice neighborhood, I'm really disappointed in the city.
Let me just say one thing that may not comfort you at all, but there is a property on East State Street that people objected to when it was purchased by the people who own it, where there was potential for perhaps unruliness, or violence, or disagreeableness, or potential problems. It hasn't worked out that way, and I think now this establishment is bullied...
But why chance it?
Well, it's not our issue to deal with.
But I just want you to know that we are all disappointed.
We do understand that, but I don't think the city is doing this. The city is allowing something that is permitted in the zone. They didn't think it up. It's not their idea. They are doing what is legal for them to do.
I know, I've been told it's a done deal and all, but I'm still disappointed in this, that they would do this to our neighborhood. We have several streets there, and there are little ladies, there are little children... We have several streets there, and there are little ladies, there are little children. That's what worries me.
I understand.
Thank you.
Would you want a home?
Again, that's not something that we can determine in our discussion.
But I'm not asking you to answer me. I want you to think about it.
Yes.
And I'm really, really disappointed, so. And I know we don't have that much, but we have a nice ranch town, a retirement home, which we planned on.
Thank you.
Which we enjoy, and I, but I am disappointed. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you do get a rebuttal, so we're closing the floor to-
Come now.
Opposition to be heard, and the appellate-
Yes, come.
Do I have to say my name again?
Yes, please.
Jackie Brown, 24 Graham Drive. And there is a statistic that only 10% of drug addicts fully recover, therefore, and this could endanger our neighborhood.
I'm sorry, but-
And this thing, this-
I'm sorry, Jackie, but we need to stick solely on the subject of granting the substitution
of a house. It was there, okay, in the, when they were planning this, okay, since I was not told the truth initially, and the things I've heard tonight already, I just wonder, was there ever a true plan to put on that first floor of business?
Again, these are things that we have not the answers to.
Well, it just seems to me that they used that to get this through, the back door.
They came through the city code. They have city code approval.
So they could later on change it into a residential? Because of course, we'll agree, two stories is better than-
We don't know anything about that. We weren't in on the beginning. We are addressing the issue before us, and it has nothing to do with drug addiction or unruly people. We don't deal with that. We just have to do what's in front of us. Okay? If you want to speak to Mr. Gillespie about his plan, then I think that's the proper place to start.
Now, I think there may be a mechanism for the neighborhood to pursue on their own and stop the project. I don't think there is anything against that, but this board, we are making a choice between two buildings right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other new face in opposition? If not, Mr. Gillespie, would you care to rebuttal before we close the floor?
Well, I think of it as a rebuttal, but I can, I suppose that's where it fits in the agenda. Kevin Gillespie from the neighborhood, 29 Grant Park Boulevard. Just to say that I'm in the business of building strong communities and neighborhoods, and my door is completely open to each of one of you individually as a group. I understand there is a newly formed, and Paul Oak told me about a neighborhood association. I would intend to be active in a way that would invite all of you to be active as well. And we would definitely make this an asset to the neighborhood. I have no doubt personally. I live in the neighborhood. I just added on, invested in my own house.
Can you explain how you think it's an asset?
No, I'm not going to. I'm here to open my door to you. I'm not really, it's not really a rebuttal. It's just me telling you all that my door is open to you and we'll talk-
Because you don't have anything else to say about the substitution. No. The floor is now closed, and we will discuss amongst ourselves whether to approve the substitution.
Frozen cots.
Frozen cots. We don't have to follow the six guidelines, but as to two stories, technically three over the one.
You don't?
To make a motion.
Do we make a motion?
Yes, we need to make a motion.
I move that we grant a variance to the property-
No, that's a substitution.
Okay. We grant a substitution. Is that what we're being asked to do?
Yes.
Okay. Request that we move to grant the substitution under section 230702B of a nonconforming use, which is a single-family house with first-floor residential use, for a not more objectionable nonconforming use, which would be a four-unit residential structure with first-floor residential use.
Second. Okay. If we discuss the single-family residence over a four-unit apartment on the same floor, which one's more objectionable?
Well, the question is whether it's not objectionable, it's nonconforming. Is residential use of one of the buildings more nonconforming than residential use on the first building?
If you look at the different residential codes, I would say that a single-family building would think of as an R1.
But it's not.
I'm just saying, we have to imagine this some way. How do we, how do we view?
It's in a B3 zone, so it's nonconforming.
Correct. It is nonconforming, no matter which way.
What criteria do you use to deter whether it's more objectionable?
Whether it's more objectionable.
It's not a question of objectionable. Is it more nonconforming?
Objectionable.
Once you get past one unit, it gets to be more nonconforming. Two, a little more nonconforming. Three, a little more nonconforming.
Okay. We're not talking about the size. We're talking about, we're talking about use, residential use on the first floor.
A three-story would be legal.
As opposed-
The story was just that the resident was talking about the first floor. That's basically the difference, but the three-story is-
Is residence residence, that we have to define what is-
I think, I would rather have two-story, you want to have a story, and select the resident's.
It's a very odd situation.
It is, yeah, it is.
It's very odd, and, you know, we're looking at a two-story versus a three-story. I watched the planning commission. I saw that building.
Three-story?
Yes.
Well, if they were truly concerned with the neighborhood, they would make that two and a half stories.
Well, we've had some-
They could make it one and a half.
Except it was already in a business zone, so they were just, that's why they went to the planning commission, because they didn't need a variance. They just put it up, because it's a business on the first floor in a business zone.
We said no to the original, you know, I agree with her, you know, I mean-
We did.
Or we should take their bluff, say, okay, go ahead and build the three-story, or, you know, it's something we don't want to do. But at the same time, if you have a choice between the two, obviously, I would rather people be in the first floor and use the smaller one.
You know, I don't know that we should play the game of shell game and play bluff with developers.
Well, the other thing is, if perhaps what would eventually have to happen if we were, if they, if we were denied this, and so they have stated that they would put out a three-story building, the first story would be-
Was the business in the third.
And then a business would be put on the first floor, but perhaps that business would bring, and what could that be? A convenience store, something that would draw the neighborhood more together, and so the people upstairs would not be alienated.
So you'd rather have a three-story building just to get the business on the bottom floor?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Yes, it is what you're saying.
They like the business. And then that would be, I'm saying, picture it that way. It might be objectionable.
So I think we can, after what's more or less objectionable.
But it's more objectionable or not objectionable.
So, John, we'll start with you.
Well, again, I said no to originals, but I'm going to say, between the two choices, I would say yes for the, for the substitution.
You're saying yes for the substitution.
I vote yes for the substitution.
I vote no.
Yeah, I vote no. You have your substitution.